Okay, so we have returned to open session. At this time, is there any public comment?
There is not.
All right, then, at this time, are there any proposed changes to the agenda? Okay, then that takes us to the superintendent's report.
All right, so I just, I want to start with an overview of our enrollment as we are, we updated it again today. The board had it on Friday, but then I did reinsert an updated enrollment report because, as you know, this time of year, things do change a bit day to day. So, you know, one thing in particular we've been keeping an eye on was our kindergarten enrollment. And our kindergarten enrollment is now up to 151 students, which is greater than, 11 students greater than kindergarten this past year. So, we're still finding it to be a bit skewed in terms of sort of the, the location of where new enroll, enrollment is coming from. So, you'll see on the enrollment report that some kindergarten class sizes still look much smaller than others, with Ames being our highest, with 21 students in each of the kindergarten classes, and I believe Hollywood being the lowest with 12 kids in the kindergarten class. So, it's, it's been a strange year in terms of enrollment. The other thing I want to just point out is that fifth grade, we had a, let's see, we have 35 more fifth graders this year than we had in fifth grade last year. A lot of new students coming into fifth grade. And so, we have several classes, three classes at Central that'll have 26 students, the fifth grade class at Blythe will have 26 students in it, and at Hollywood will have 21, and at Ames we will have 24s and 25s. So, that's really at kind of that upper end of our preferred enrollment scenario in terms of class size. But that, that's an unusual piece to it too, so I just point out both of those. And overall, our enrollment is up 58 students from where we were last year at, at this time. So, any questions about any of that?
So, 58 more than last year, but I'm remembering last year was sort of down or trend-wise or...
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to know where to make a trend out of it yet so far, but, you know, there was some thought that maybe some families didn't present their children for school because of COVID, or some children had, you know, even, they had homeschool because, so it's hard to entirely capture it, but this feels a bit more maybe normalized from where we, where we typically are. Certainly kindergarten was what, you know, closer to what we were anticipating, because we were looking at it last month, and we felt it seemed particularly low. What's more unusual is just the, through the student assignment process, probably more students in North Riverside, more new students in North Riverside. And again, just looking at sort of general, sort of, some of this is sort of a conglomeration of anecdotal information, but...
But I think the question you're asking, the number now isn't like much bigger than it's been in the past.
Correct.
Right.
And it seems like, I feel like it's always floating around 1700.
Yes, right, I would obviously say we're 1700, and we're at 1690.
Yeah, so we're still, it's not like we're 100 over where we typically are, so...
I think it's, the difference for me though is that you have some that were minus, you know, 17, and some that are plus 35. So, that for me is they have certain grades, we didn't usually have that, where we had like two grade levels that were...
Right, we're up more, 29 more third graders, 35 more fifth graders, and yet we're down 17 fourth graders. I mean, again, compared to fourth grade last year, compared to any of those grade levels last year. So, it's not that the cohort is departing, it's that, that grade level in comparison to that grade level in a year prior.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think best described as uneven.
Yeah.
But we're, we're managing it and appreciate families that have been flexible and families that really expected to be, you know, enrolled at one school and received assignment to another, and thanking parents certainly for their flexibility around that, and continuing to think about ways that we make sure that our student assignment and flexible boundaries are well-known, even though we share it at our kindergarten information night, it's a lot of detail about it on our website. I think it still comes off, sometimes it's a frustration or confusion for parents. The other thing I want to share, it feels much less momentous than it has other years, is our school, I'm not going to say reopening plan, because we've been open, but somehow the word reopening seems to sort of come out of my mouth, but it's not that, just an overview of our plan related to COVID for the '22, '23 school year. So, I have a presentation up there for everybody. Perhaps it should be called our new normal kind of school year. It is full in-person, regularly scheduled school day from pre-K through eighth grade, and I know, you know, the national conversation, hearing it on the news, that is the goal that, you know, all schoolchildren return to full-time, in-person instruction. So, that is absolutely where we are, as you know, it's where we were last year, it was really that year before when we were in the unique hybrid schedule. There will still be very limited remote options for children with extended illnesses through home hospital services. That's always been an option available to students who qualify for that. That does require a physician's authorization for that, and it's with anticipation that a child would be out for 10 school days or more, right Pam and I? Our West 40 program, also, they, they opened up a remote academy, not just because of COVID, they found that there were some children that just, you know, by agreement would benefit from a remote school opportunity, and they are going to continue that. Again, it's not a COVID program, it's a program though that I think got some traction during COVID, and they'll continue to offer that. School's going to be a regular lunch schedule, you'll hear me say it again, but social distancing has really fallen by the wayside as a required or recommended practice. Our before and after care services will be back, I mean, they've been back in sort of full swing last year too, but they will be doing what they do and providing that before and after care for families that need that or want that. Co-curriculars and sports will be implemented, you know, back to our kind of pre-pandemic focus. And again, as you know, we sort of slowly built all those back into our schedule and our routines, but there were a few things that were challenging to do during the, sort of, the height of the pandemic, so we're excited about having those opportunities available for kids as well. And here, the health and safety protocols, and all health and safety protocols may be modified to address changing public health conditions as directed by ISB, IDPH, and Cook County Public Health. So, I think it's everyone's way of saying, we're going to keep an eye on everything, and if we have to make modifications and adjustments, we'll be making modifications and adjustments, and hoping we won't have to make too many of those. I know Pam and Nora have been following the public health guidance, we've all been following the public health guidance, it's been perhaps more vague than, than in the past, so, and maybe that's a good thing. So, social distancing is no longer required. There is an exclusion due to COVID illness, the COVID illness in days one through five. And then a child can return to school, or a staff member can return to school if they're asymptomatic, meaning like fever-free, not an extensive cough, on that day six through 10, but they will be required to wear a mask on those days. And then we would have some social distancing at lunch on days six through 10 without the mask. And there will be, right now, we are planning on a classroom communication, so families will continue to get the letter that a child or a person, an individual, because it could be a staff member, in your child's classroom tested positive for COVID. We'll also update a COVID dashboard. What they won't be getting is the elaborate letter then about, well, close contacts won't be getting a letter, because really, again, close contacts as a, as a concept has also essentially fallen by the wayside. So, it's really just a person with COVID illness that would be excluded from school. We're still going to do the saliva screening. As you know, we went with an opt-in approach, so families and staff members have to give us explicit written consent that they want their child, or as a staff member, they want to opt-in. It's still a service that is free to us, offered to us by Shield. As of today, I think we had 59 family members that have opted in, or, you know, individuals within families where their parents have opted them into saliva testing. We are going to do it at home. We feel that we could offer it like maybe in school, in the nurse's office for a family that maybe it's just too hard for them to do it at home, or for some, you know, extenuating reason may want to do it at school, but that won't be our norm, or that won't be what's typical. And then we'll still do weekly screening tests for unvaccinated staff members. So, educational services will be provided to students who are excluded from school due to having COVID illness. Illinois State Board of Education came out today just with their guidance, saying that students will be required to have remote instruction. They did not get at all specific about synchronous or asynchronous, or the number of hours. So, right now, our plan is to have that asynchronous opportunity where teachers will develop through their learning management system, through Schoology or through Seesaw, an opportunity for students to have sort of real-time access to what's going on in the classroom and their assignments. It won't be the Zoom camera link, it'll just be the real-time access to essentially a learning-at-home set of assignments, materials. And then, Schoology and Seesaw both do allow for communication back and forth between teacher and student. Health and safety, other protocols, we did purchase the air filters for classrooms in large group learning spaces, we continue to have those in the schools. We know that fresh air is a good thing, we, we've always known that, but I think we learned that with kind of particular attention during COVID, good hand hygiene and good cleaning. Those are things we were doing before COVID, but I think we got even better at them during COVID, and those things will continue. So, perhaps they go without saying, but I thought it was worth noting here. So, that is, that is kind of in a nutshell, the kinds of things that we are planning, planning and will be implementing related to COVID illness still being sort of in our midst. We know that the world is kind of seeing it differently, CDC has rolled back a lot of their guidance, but we feel that this is consistent with what we know right now, and again, with that caveat that things could change. So, I don't know if you have questions, or Pam, Nora, Angela, if there's anything else you'd want to add, we've been over this together, so... We do have on the agenda the resolution for return to school, which is similar to the resolution we've done for the past two years, just given that the COVID illness is still here, the governor still has a emergency order in place, and that the, the board would essentially authorize me to make adjustments and changes in conferring with board president and then bringing back to the board for full agreement. But again, I don't anticipate, you know, something like a lockdown or a school closure, but again, it sort of allows for significant shift in our decision-making if, if public health information were presented to us in such a way that that's something we need to contemplate and implement. Any questions about any of that?
I, I do wonder about that resolution, it definitely making sense to reauthorize it this year, is that something that would be anticipated in future years, or hard to say at this point?
Hard to say, and I know not every school district is doing it this year, so I think maybe that's an indicator that it will be something that could sort of fall by the wayside. Like, I think it's sort of depend on, will COVID be seen less as a sort of public health emergency and more as endemic, or just part of a constellation of perhaps regular, like regular illnesses that we might encounter in a school? It's a good question, I just don't have a clear answer.
Until the next pandemic, of course.
All right, that's, that's, those are the two items I had, Dan.
All right. Next up is the consent agenda. Who's pitching in for Wes then? All right, Joel? The acting board secretary, could they read tonight's consent agenda?
Tonight's consent agenda includes the following items, the minutes of the July 20th closed session of this year, and the minutes of the July 20th regular business meeting, the personnel report, and the payables pre-list of August 17th and July 20, 28th, both this year as well.
All right. Is there a motion that the board approve tonight's consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, are there any items that we should, anyone would like to have removed for further discussion? Okay. If not, then Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Marhol.
Hi.
Mr. Barsadi.
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber.
Hi.
Ms. Murphy.
Hi.
And Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Motion passes.
All right, next we have Riverside Education Council, I don't believe anyone's here this evening, so we will move on to board member comments.
Looking forward to a relatively normal year, and a good start to...
Please note in the record that board is knocked on board. I interrupted you, sorry.
I know, he's scared.
And hoping that we do not have to implement any extraordinary actions.
Definitely, definitely share those sentiments. All right. If there are no further board comments, we will move on to committee reports. The first committee is education.
There's no update, right?
Really?
You know, in two days, next Monday, the 22nd, so that's unsure what Angela's got her mind on, so that's pretty much it, just getting everybody ready. Unless you have something to add, you're okay. That's it.
Okay. Next then is facilities.
Facilities will, will be meeting next week to just continue on with our discussions on Blythe and Hauser, and anything else that we need in terms of long-term capital programs.
All right. And Wes is not here tonight, so no personnel committee, I assume? And neither is Stephanie, so no policy committee, I assume?
Correct.
And that will take us to finance.
Not much, it's just, just to let everyone know that DOD is wrapping up, so we should be getting a report soon.
All right. And that moves us on to old business. And first item under old business says, the aforementioned, return to school resolution. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the 2022, 2023 return to school resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? No? Okay. And Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Barsadi.
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber.
Hi.
Ms. Murphy.
Hi.
Mr. Marhol.
Hi.
And Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Motion passes.
All right, next is the board, board and board superintendent agreements from August 3rd, 2022. Is there a motion that the board approve the board, board and board superintendent agreements as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, at our last special meeting, we had our self-evaluation, and I thought it was a really, really valuable and fruitful conversation, and something I'm glad that we're getting in the habit of doing every year. So, we didn't change anything in our agreements, I think that should be known, so we're all pretty comfortable with our board, board and board superintendent agreements, and yeah.
Yeah. Yes, indeed, I agree, that meeting last, two weeks ago was definitely very fruitful, and also I'm in agreement that I'm, I'm glad that we're doing them more often than in previous years. Anything else? All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Kleiber.
Hi.
Ms. Murphy.
Hi.
Mr. Marhol.
Hi.
Mr. Barsadi.
Hi.
And Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
All right, motion passes.
All right, and next on the agenda is the review of intergovernmental agreements. The first one listed is Village of Riverside Parks and Recreation, School Age Child Care Program, intergovernmental agreement. Let's see...
Yeah, so these aren't really action items, but I know the board had asked that you just review these annually, even though they're, they're essentially agreements that are continued year to year unless there's a decision to, to cease them. And then the one that I'll just point out is the Riverside Brookfield High School with, for the orchestra teacher, that one was specifically written for one year, and had to be explicitly renewed, and if you recall, we're not renewing it. So, I, I just wanted to make sure they were on the agenda and for everyone to take a look at, and certainly any discussion, but they don't really require action to, to re-approve them or anything. If anything, I think that gets maybe tricky to, to act on them year to year when they're meant to be on going agreements. Sorry to interrupt around all of that.
No, I appreciate that, because I was looking for the motion, so...
Martha, this isn't intended to be a surprise, but for the IGA with Brookfield and the school crossing guards, can we fill in the blanks next time around?
I know Jim has been, Jim has been, I'm going to, Jim, the Brookfield crossing guard agreement has some blanks in it, so we'll make sure it's filled in, but...
That's it?
Yeah, thank you. Jim has been carefully monitoring the, the incoming and outgoing money, I guess outgoing money around this crossing guard agreement, so, thank you, Joel.
I guess I do have a question sort of regarding the crossing guards, how did, how did this past summer go with Brookfield utilizing Hollywood? Did they, I mean, did they use it much? Did they do it at all?
They did, I mean, they ran a regular camp over there. I know there were a few days they had to cancel because our air conditioner wasn't working over there, but yeah, sort of a non-issue, I mean, it's, you know, we're not using it, so it's easy enough to share with them. I think they found value in offering one of their camps through the, through the school, so it was, I think went smoothly.
I guess along those lines for Brookfield Parks, I noticed, we're, we're still re-upping fully with Riverside Parks. I'm trying to remember, was, Brookfield was not, did not put forward an offer for Hollywood section this time around, or...
We didn't seek it. You know, I think that's maybe how, what the next step would be, is that we would have to make a request if that was something that we were interested in pursuing. As you recall, the discussion also sort of got into some details around what if the costs weren't the same for all families, or what if the financial assistance wasn't the same for all families? And so I think it became more complex for us to potentially be working with multiple entities for the before and after care.
And I guess the, like, the agreements with the Brookfield and Riverside Police Departments, how is that from your perspective going? I mean, does it seem, I know there's something going on, I believe this week or something...
Yeah, actually, well, I know, sort of relates to the MOU, but really more aside from the Riverside Police did a drill here this morning at 7:00 AM. They were out of the school by about 7:40 AM. They just, they wanted to run a drill, I can point over there, go up and down the stairs, that kind of thing. They ended up really just coming in and getting a really thorough view of the building, they went down to the basement, they really just looked at kind of all the spaces to make sure that they're very familiar. I met with Brookfield Police this morning also, because they were over at Hollywood School with Kim Heffner, the principal, I joined them, so, and this has been true all along, unfortunately, given the, the challenges of, you know, the Uvalde school shooting and even the tragedy in Highland Park, I think everybody is just very, you know, I think we've always been very focused on safety, but I think there's kind of a heightened focus on safety as there should be, so I just really appreciate the partnership. I've been in touch with both Brookfield and Riverside Police, you know, public safety, I should say, and I think they've just been very thoughtful about, you know, what do you need, they're thinking a lot about what they need. I think all departments have been through extra training around rapid response. One of the things we had looked at post-Uvalde was acts, quick access. We, fire and police have always had a way to access our buildings through a Knox box, where they can get into a box and get the, essentially the master keys. We actually gave them key fobs for each squad car for both Brookfield and Riverside, never wanting access to be the thing that would deter them for any period of time. So, it's, it's a serious time, it's a serious topic, it's something that I would say is top of mind right now with, with all police, fire, and our, in terms of our local entities. The other part of the agreement, as you know, is also to help us in a case of a significant discipline issue or something like that, it's just, again, the conversations remind me about just the importance of building trust, building communication, building relationships. The Brookfield Police Chief was sharing just today, he said, when we do our annual safety meeting every year around April, we had it this year in April, it was just a good conversation, it always is, it's Brookfield, North Riverside, Riverside, just an opportunity for our principals and our entire leadership team to, to just have face-to-face conversation with, with those officials, and he said it really for us just reminded us, you know, like the importance of the work we're doing in schools, the challenges that schools face around safety, and so I, I, I feel really good about the relationships we have with them. I'm glad we have the IGAs, I think it sort of solidifies and formalizes that relationship.
All right. Anything else, any other questions? If not, we will move on to new business. First item under new business, the only item under new business, a new telecom provider service.
Right, and this is one where, and I know this isn't our preferred way, but where there's a bit of a, a timing issue here, right? Where the, the motion would potentially be that the board would act on and give us direction to work with Zoom as a telecom service provider, with the provision that we would have more input from our attorney prior, prior to any formal contract agreement.
Yeah, our, our current telecom service, through your contracts, is Call One, which eventually became Perilous Telecommunications, those have just been traditionally renewed as a consent agenda item in the past, and so when, when this came up, the support for our existing phone system is going away, our on-premise one, and actually, the company that supports it is helping us facilitate, helped us facilitate working with not only Zoom, but Ring Central, and our current telecom provider also helped facilitate with another company here, Spring, that we have to look at. So, the, the path for, I think, most entities is to move phones off-site. It's not a new technology, but it has evolved, and it's more robust, and actually, cost savings over, over time, you're not having to replace the hardware that is local, your server hardware, everything just resides in the cloud, it's easier to manage. So, in, in that perspective was fairly, I think it was about $30,000, was of course the first contract. Subsequently, as you extend that out, we replace, we, we purchased the server that it's on about six, seven years ago, so if we had to replace it now, we'd have to replace it again, and so again, there's more savings down there, so longer term it is an overall savings and a much more robust product.
I assume, I assume all the different vendors offer similar security in terms of, although it's off-site, and I understand the cloud, but that it is ours, it's secure, it's, they're all...
Yes. I, I think it's, one way to look at it is, I mean, who has the resources to provide a higher level of security on our systems? Do we have that locally, you know, or...
Sure.
And Zoom and Ring Central are two of the big players now. We also did look at Teams, Microsoft Teams, which was, which was a lot more expensive than even trying to maintain a current system, just with their, their licensing. But yeah, from a security standpoint, I would consider both secure, but we are, you know, we did look at that in terms of an evaluation process with them as well.
And I didn't, I didn't expect a different answer from you, but I also wanted to say it out loud.
It's always good to ask. Yeah. It should all, I mean, you don't mind me saying, but it should also be pointed out that we, we talked, and you told us that you did an evaluation too, the staff looked at this.
Right, well, we, the, the process was, and I don't know if you recall in the spring, when I kind of did an overview of things, and kind of mentioned that this was going to be something that we're going to do, we're going to look to remain cost-neutral and get, get our phone system off-prem. What I did is kind of initial vetting, we, you know, kind of knocked out Teams right away because it wasn't even within the ballpark of, of the other four solutions. Well, and the four solutions being maintain, trying to maintain our existing one, and looking at three alternatives. So, I did gather together, tried to pull from different groups, pulled the teacher, office secretary, support staff from our administration center, another director, and just got their, their input on, they had the, an overview of the different interfaces, because it does move, it does move people to, additionally, to have a soft phone, which some of you may, might be very familiar with depending on your, your work environment, so that is an added feature in addition to the phones in the classroom. I think Zoom, there's a level of comfort because we use Zoom, and it's using the same interface, so it was very similar to, to Ring Central, those were, it was really between the two. But one of the things that, in, in the evaluation process, I really tried to step back, because I was comfortable with all of them, and Zoom was by far, we, we used a scoring system, and Zoom had a perfect score across the board from everybody on the team, and Ring Central scored high, but not as high as Zoom, and I think a lot of that had to do with the, just the comfort level of the interface.
So, if something were to go down, how, what's their support service like?
Well, it's, you know, they're, the phone system will rely more on internet, our internet connection.
So basically, is it outage issue?
Yeah. And, and we'll also, we'll also be looking at, you know, some redundancies, adding some, some very small internet connections on sites, so that, because currently our provider's Comcast, so adding a non-Comcast service that to have some failover, that will also be part of...
That's probably helpful based on some recent history.
Yes, it's just, just in case, because if something does go down in Comcast, whether it's fiber or broadband, it's probably going to...
Yeah, for some reason in this area, it seems like Comcast sometimes... Yeah, for some reason in this area, it seems like Comcast sometimes has issues.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Right, thanks.
You had mentioned that as well in the past about back or alternate connection.
Yeah, it's it's something that I think now is the cost of connectivity is coming down. It becomes more feasible. It's not something that we receive E-rate discounting on, so we pay full price on it. Normally, we get about 40% discount on our telecom service. So, but but now things have really come down and also the number of carriers in the area has gone up more options.
No, Don, I appreciate the fact that you go through this process and you do it rigorously and thank you.
Well, and then one point to bring up as well, I think I'd asked and you'd mentioned that several years ago, it would be thought of hardwired copper phones were a much more reliable service versus internet phones. I think you're saying that that's the opposite these days.
Yeah, supporting of, support for copper-based lines. You know, we we moved from a copper-based, you know, connectivity used to be T1 lines for phones and use multiple lines. That was copper. We moved, transitioned to virtual, so it was, it was over our internet connection. Pots lines, we only have a handful in the district, and they're becoming more and more expensive because there's, the technology's old, it is unreliable, it's very subject to, you know, moisture, you know, so you get a storm, your pots lines can go off. I would probably, you know, I would think even most people in the room, even if they do have a home telephone, it's no longer a pot slide, it's probably coming over your internet. And it's like.
Right, right.
Consequently, the, you know, even from a technical level on the AT&amp;T support, I think just even the number of technicians that know that technology is just kind of dwindling and now you have, have where the digital, digital lines are just more common and they don't require necessarily a technician to go to go onsite to troubleshoot a single line, so. And we'll be moving all of our pots lines over to digital also as a part of this because those lines are becoming so expensive and are also will no longer be covered in your E-rate.
And Don, to your preference of the board, if they're comfortable and take action tonight on this, right, because you have a timeline.
Yeah, there is a timeline to get the phone system implemented. We do have to, there's a lot of background planning for, you know, the schema for phone extensions, provisioning for equipment. And we're targeting, since our contract's up in November, early November, we're targeting Columbus Day weekend to be a good weekend to transition, do some testing. There's a day off in there. We have an institute day as well, so it gives us a nice buffer to get staff up to speed on on stuff, so that's what the target.
Yeah, I was going to ask, does it take much staff update? Probably not that bad.
It, I I think, you know, the basics of it, it's still, you know, pick up a phone.
Yeah.
And then dial. There's, they're actually, the phones will be more functional, they'll have an interface, they have, you know, better directories, structures. I think the, you know, over time, they'll be getting comfortable with the the soft phone, what their capabilities are. So.
I mean, I think it's fine, especially considering it's cost neutral. It's sort of like we have to do this regardless. I mean, and also like staff supported it, so I mean, I'm fine voting on it tonight.
That's fine.
I agree with you.
Sounds fine.
Right, thank you.
All right, so sounding like we're okay with the vote for this. All right. Get back to where the screen I needed to be, sorry. All right, is there a motion that the board authorizes the superintendent to execute the Zoom Video Communications Master Subscription Agreement, subject to attorney review and final approval by the superintendent as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Murphy.
Aye.
Mr. Marhol.
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi.
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber.
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Is there any additional public comment? And future meeting dates, September 7, Committee of the Whole meeting at Blythe Park, in the Blythe Park Multipurpose Room. September 21, in the regular business meeting, 7:00 PM, at the Hauser Learning Resource Center, where we are now. Board will enter into closed session at 6:15 PM if necessary and return to open session at 7:00. October 5 is Committee of the Whole, 7:00 PM, at Hollywood Multipurpose Room. And this is too early.
I know.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
Obviously, you and Linda have had like discussions on how to make meetings.
Yeah. It's not too early.
Part of our self-evaluation, right?
Yeah, exactly.
This is good. This is good.
All right. If there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.